I reconvene the Lane County Board of Commissioners. It's again Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. And we will pick up our agenda at Item 11A, which is the third reading and continued public hearing for ordinance 15-01 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 15 to adopt a vehicle registration fee if approved by Lane County voters in May 2015. And I will turn this over to Lydia McKenney real quick for any additional staff report, and then we will reopen the public hearing afterwards. Ms. McKenney?
I didn't know if you wanted to just reiterate that Commissioner Farr is...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Sorry. Commissioner Farr is attending today. He is in Washington, DC on our United Front trip lobbying Congress. He is on our speakerphone here. So if people would please use their microphones today because it is very difficult to hear over the speakerphone if you don't use your microphone. So get right up to the mics and speak loudly so Commissioner Farr can hear. And we will get a microphone above the speakerphone when he wants to participate also to make sure everybody can hear him. So with that, I will turn it back to Ms. McKenney.
Thanks very much, Chair Bozovic, Commissioners.
Right up to the mic there.
Pardon?
There you go.
Okay. We're here today for the third reading and continued public hearing on the proposed vehicle registration fee. And today we are asking for the Board to approve the ordinance to place the fee on the May ballots. And I'll just quickly do a summary of how we got here. Again, as we've discussed, the county has historically had...
Ms. McKenney speaking. I cannot hear it.
Okay. You need to really get right up to the mic and speak. There you go.
Commissioner Farr, is this better? Can you hear me now?
Can you hear now?
Uh, yes, certainly.
Okay. How about that? Can you hear this?
I can hear it. Thank you.
Okay. So we're here for a third reading, continued public hearing on the vehicle registration fee. And the summary of how we got here is, as we've discussed a number of times, the county historically has had timber revenues or forest payments in addition to our state highway fund dollars. This allowed us to build a really excellent transportation system and also gave us funding to keep that well-maintained. We also, it actually allowed us to have a revenue sharing program where we provided road funding to the cities within Lane County. The forest payments that were replaced, the timber revenues began a steady decline over a decade ago, and the county did respond. We've reduced our staff by 35% since 2000. We've reorganized and consolidated departments, and we've implemented efficiencies and applied innovative technologies to our pavement preservation methods. We've even had to start cutting road maintenance services like the dust abatement program for gravel roads. Despite these measures, we have reached what we're calling the tipping point, and the Board has recognized and educated the staff that we need a stable funding source for a fiscally responsible means of maintaining and preserving safe roads and bridges. The Board wants us to continue being able to invest a dollar to keep our roads in good shape rather than letting them deteriorate and having to take $12 or more per square foot to rebuild them. So a Revenue Options Committee was formed, generated 28 different means of new revenue sources for the road funds, and of those 28, seven were forwarded to our Citizens Advisory Committee, the Roads Advisory Committee, for further review. That Roads Advisory Committee analyzed the most promising in detail, and they did recommend unanimously that the Board consider a vehicle registration fee. Some of the reasons that the RAC recommended this to the Board is that the funds are generated by road users. Vehicle registrations are relatively funding, relatively stable over time. The revenues would be shared with cities, so we would distribute 40% of the funds to the cities and 60% would be for the county. It's a very cost-effective means of implementation and administration because it's collected by the state through their current system. And this is also very important that this money is constitutionally dedicated and limited to road purposes only. The Board has had several meetings on this issue since last August. On January 6th, we had the first reading on the ordinance and set the public hearing for the 27th. Two weeks ago, the 27th, we had the opening of the public hearing. Twenty people spoke, and there were several questions that were raised there which are echoed by, that we heard when we went out and spoke with the cities. And I know the Board has also been in receipt of comments through Engage Lane County. There's been other means that we've all been receiving comments. And there are some common themes in some of the comments we've received. I think the first most common thing that we hear is, "It's a regressive fee. Why aren't you exempting people who have multiple vehicles or people who have fixed incomes?" And again, the real challenge for the county is that we have no authority to make any exemptions other than vehicles that are already exempted. There are a number of vehicles that are exempt. I want to be clear that trailers, we had, there was an article in the paper about trailers which are not exempt, but travel trailers, recreational vehicles, motorhomes, those are exempt from the fee. Antique vehicles, classic vehicles, classic cars are exempt from the fee. Disabled veterans' vehicles are exempt from the fee. Farm vehicles. So there are some state exemptions that we, of course, will also give, but we have limitations. We cannot exempt anything further. Another very common question is, "Why aren't we taxing trucks? They're not paying their fair share." And again, as we've discussed here a number of times, trucks over 26,000 pounds in the state of Oregon were rather unique in that they do pay this weight mile fee. In addition, trucks pay a sliding registration fee based on their weight. So when staff did an analysis of what the comparison is between what a passenger vehicle pays as compared to what a truck pays, if you look at the average number of miles a passenger vehicle drives compared with the average number of miles a truck drives, because that's how we basically calculate the fees, trucks pay 37 times what the passenger vehicles do. And then every year, every two years, the state requires an analysis to demonstrate trucks pay their fair share. There's been questions about studded tires because they do cause more damage to the roads. And again, with studded tires, the same with bicycles. We don't have a mechanism to be able to tax those, collect those fees efficiently, so it would actually cost us more to collect the fees from studded tire users or bicyclists than we would be able to generate. The other question again we're receiving is about the weight of vehicles. Why aren't we charging based on the weight and having heavier passenger vehicles pay more? And again, we are limited by the state, but we've also understand that to some degree there really is not much difference with regards to passenger vehicles. You know, everything up to about 10,000 pounds has roughly the same impact on the road. So again, those are some of the common themes and questions that we've heard. Depending on what the Board's decision is today, if there is a decision to move this forward, then we will create a website. We have this in the works to provide some of this information and also have other means of being able to get that word out to people through speakers, bureaus, and those types of things. So at the conclusion of last, two weeks ago, the public hearing, the Board gave very specific language to staff to revise the ordinance, to clarify that the funds could not be used for Royal Patrol, that is currently in the Oregon Constitution as well, and also to specify that it is the Board's intent, and now it will be codified, that the funds for Lane County will be used only for maintenance and preservation of our roads and bridges, that we will not be using this for any new projects, which again was never our intent. So I'll close my comments here just with a reminder to the Board, which is that we do need to make a decision today in order to meet our deadlines. There's an item after this in which we'll discuss the voter's pamphlet and the ballot language in the event that the Board chooses to move this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McKenney? Seeing none, I will reopen the public hearing, and I have, it looks like I'm getting another sheet here. So far, I have five people signed up to speak to us, and I will call your name and the next person, and if you'll come to the microphone and state your name and the city you're from for the record, and then I'll begin a three-minute timer at that point, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board. The first speaker is James Madison, followed by James Nagel.
My name is James Madison. I am a Springfield resident, and I'm speaking on, speaking for all the people who have antique vehicles. And I feel that tagging all those people that have multiple vehicles would be a real hit on their pocketbook, especially if they're retired, limited income. And I feel that somehow or another, we ought to come up with something else. But I'm against it, as you can probably tell. I could, maybe, I put on the paper they're neutral, but I'm sticking with "against." But I'm just stating the fact that I think that it'd hurt people that have got multiple vehicles, especially if younger families that have children that are driving, that's going to hurt them also. I haven't got any more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. James Nagel, followed by John Nagy.
My name is James Nagel. I live south of Cottage Grove in the county. We have three vehicles, cars, and in addition to that, a trailer. We, well, on seeing this, I immediately went out and said, "How many miles have I driven on these cars?" The main car was 5,800 miles, um, 5,900, I guess I can't see well. The secondary car is 1,300. Our pickup truck is 600. And the trailer that we have, I'm estimating at 160 miles. That really includes two trips to Lane Forest Products. Relative to the projected fund or charge, that's very close to two cents a mile for every mile I drive. And I think that's terrible. And in looking at the fact of, yes, we have the multiple vehicles, why? Well, they're getting old. One is a backup. We don't drive any multiple vehicles now. It just doesn't happen that we have two out on the road at the same time. And this really translates into two cents a mile, or about two cents a mile for the charge of having all four, you know, vehicles there. The trailer may go pretty soon, but is, I now just have two more trees that just came down on my property, and I have a lot of cleanup work, so that probably wasn't going to happen. Equivalent cost of the four vehicles in a gas tax would be approximately 50 cents a And that, I know, won't be an easy thing to sell, but I have to say, for the damage I see in our shopping trips and going around the county, even on the interstates, it's big trucks that seem to be causing the damage. And of course, there's the log haulers and the gravel and concrete trucks when you get into county roads. The increasing of fees for these trucks and the studded tires and all vehicles would be a reasonable, I think, a more reasonable thing. And I believe the other counties in the state have the same problem to somewhat of a degree, if not as bad as Lane. So I really think that in conjunction with the gas tax increase, which I think would be a, relative to the current price of gas, would probably sell easily, a small increase in, you know, the tax rates is justified, and if it doesn't go that way, a small increase in the property taxes would be probably more evenly distributed of the charges.
Thank you. We have John, and may I apologize for how I pronounce people's names now, and if I can...
I can just pronounce my whole name, my whole life.
John Nagy, and followed by Tom Turner. And I, if I could ask Commissioner Farr if he would mute his phone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is John Nagy. I was here, maybe I'll step back a little bit.
No, go ahead and step right up.
Okay. I was here last meeting, and I listened to a lot of people complaining about the roads in Lane County. Now, my history is, I've driven 3.7 million miles in my lifetime. I have three vehicles right now that will be taxed, okay? One has 330,000 miles on it, and one has 265,000 miles on it, and one has 156,000 miles on it. So that's basically close to 700,000 miles on those three vehicles. I have yet to blow a tire or knock my front end out in all those miles, driving across country, driving through Lane County, driving on forest roads. So the people that complain about that, that the roads are so bad, are must be really bad drivers, because I have yet to have to repair one, okay? For that. Now, my license fee is $42 per vehicle, per year, and you're going to raise it by $35. That is huge, huge increase that a lot of these people, including myself, really would prefer not to pay. I would like to pay a smaller increase and increase the gas tax, okay? You have never guaranteed that this money will stay in Lane County and be used only in Lane County. It'll go to the state. The state will distribute it, dispute it, sorry, disperse it. Then if they need some money that's available to tax, and you guys, nuts, it's saying you, I'm saying the government does this all the time, okay? You promise one thing and something else happens. You don't listen to the people out here. EMX is a perfect example, okay? The first thing that was out there was a bypass on West 11th, okay? Spent millions of dollars. The city killed it because it's not what the mayor wanted, okay? So you guys do not listen to us. I go to meetings all the time, and what I found from all the meetings I've gone to is that it's all preset, predetermined, and you listen to us, you let us vamp, and then you go do what the hell you got anyhow, okay? A little article I got out of the paper, it says, "51 cents is the," I get my glasses out, "is the amount that Americans say that the federal government wastes of each tax dollar. 42 cents, the amount Americans estimate the state government wastes each tax dollar." So that's 91 cents or 93 cents out of my taxes that you guys just kiss away or whatever you do with it. I wouldn't want your job. I understand it's a hard job, but you don't listen. You're not a government of the people anymore, okay? You're a government of dollars. Dollars that big people with big money can spend and slant your views, and you can't tell me they don't because big money would slap my views, okay? I understand you have a good idea that you want to come and help us out and support us, but you don't always do it. 90% of the time, it seems like you guys just kind of blow it away. And I'm sorry, I'm speaking of the whole government, and that's who you represent right now, okay? We can't keep giving. We can give a little, and willing to do that, but you're going to cost me 200 and some bucks, you know, every two years, $295 roughly increases for what I have to pay to drive my car on this. And I drive all over Lane County. I deliver RVs, I deliver motorhomes, I go up and down the coast, I go across the country.
If you could wrap up, Mr. Nagy.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Please, no pause because it takes away time from other people, and it's also may inhibit people from speaking. Mr. Turner, or should I say Sheriff?
Either works.
Followed by, it looks like Katie Henry.
Hi, and I should point out that I have multiple pages, but it's written and thought big enough that I can actually see it, I think, so we'll see how that goes. Chairman Bozovic, Board of County Commissioners, my name is Tom Turner. I'm the sheriff here in Lane County. It's my pleasure to be with you here today and to be part of dealing with this time in our county's history when we're trying to make Lane County a better place to live. That is a challenge, and I certainly take it as an honor, as I know you guys do. As Sheriff of Lane County, I'm not the first person to tell you that our county is in financial distress. We have experienced the unintended impacts of a fixed, low tax rate with continued inflation coupled with the recent loss of federal funds that we have previously relied upon for our basic services. Over the past few decades, the federal payments this county has enjoyed to fund the basic services has slowly been cut back and is now nonexistent. It's gone. It's time to find a new way, a sustainable way, a way that's feasible for our working families to move forward toward a better Lane County. We recognize that the community members and neighbors of Lane County deserve better. All the departments and the offices that provide these critical services to Lane County have suffered. We have cut budgets, we've cut staff, and as a result, cut the services to provide, that we provide to the communities of Lane County. Community members feel the impact of the loss of these services every day. The sheriff's office has less than 24-hour patrols. The district attorney's office lacks staff to prosecute large number of criminal or felony crimes, assessment, and taxation. They provide services to over 80 districts, 80 different districts, with very few personnel and very few resources. One of the things that I've worked very hard to bring as sheriff is to keep the idea of hope alive. Someday, we hope to have a robust and adequate public safety system. We need to start restoring our service levels, piece by piece, to help us move forward. All of the services the county provides are important and necessary for the health and quality of life in our community. We spent time as a county rebuilding a piece of public safety, of the public safety system in May of 2013. As a community, we work together to identify the need and a way to meet that need that will work for the residents of Lane County. We are at a critical decision right now making time for our roads. A next step, if you will, is providing the routine maintenance to our roadways. It's more cost-effective now rather than allowing them to deteriorate to a level of such disrepair that it would require massive reconstruction to make them safe again. Very much like maintaining your car or the roof on your home, we have an opportunity to take another step towards making our county a better place to live, the best place to live. Citizens of Lane County and visitors to our beautiful area need to have safe and adequate roads as well, an integral part of their day-to-day lives. And to deliver emergency services to Lane County, we need to have adequate roads that we will be able to get, that'll get us to your homes safely and quickly. Today, it comes down to maintaining our roads on an ongoing basis as part of the living system that is Lane County. All of us within the county are interdependent. We must work together to keep these components alive. I support the vehicle registration fee in order to do this, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Katie Henry, followed by Milt Lopnow.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm stepping up here. My name is Kat Henry. I moved to Nottai, Oregon, which is in Lane County. I can barely afford a car. I can barely afford anything. I happen to be disabled. I was born with a birth defect, although I do need this vehicle to be able to drive to doctors, to be able to take whatever care I need, as well as our elders and the rest of our disabled people and low-income families. For you guys to allow this raise when supposedly what happened to our lottery money? Okay, that's supposed to be taking care of our roads and our schools. Okay. Well, I don't see that happening. Somebody is sucking up the money. Maybe you should ask that question. Where is all this money going that you don't have, that you're supposed to have, that everybody is paying for? I agree with this gentleman right here. He's absolutely 100% correct. I applaud him. I really hope that you guys will think about our lesser privileged that do not have very good incomes, do not live in very nice homes, and have very nice cars, okay? We can't afford that. You take that from us, we have to juggle whether or not we get to eat or pay this or if we get to have a place to even go in the car. If we can't afford to go anywhere because you guys are nickel and diming us to death, you know? I really suggest that you open your hearts a little bit bigger and think about what's already out there. Question, where is it? Where'd all the money go? What'd you guys do with it? What does community do with this money that everybody's paying out of their pocket each and every day? Taxes, everything. You guys have the same song and dance about, "We need this again." Well, why? You already got it. So I ask you, gentlemen, to review this, and don't go by what you already decided, and this is just, you know, I get to stand here, talk, make it look good, whatever. Just, you know, dig around a little bit. Maybe cut back on some of them vacations. Tighten up on your belt, you know? I mean, come on, we don't make that kind of money. Maybe you guys do. Maybe you do. Maybe you can afford that. I can't. My grandmother can't. My grandfather can't. We can't. And now you want to tax even the kids on bicycles? Maybe. Maybe we can hit them up, you know? That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Right at three minutes there. We have Milt Lopnow, and...
I have a snake killer here.
And I don't have any further people signed up, but I will allow anyone that wishes to speak, speak, so...
Okay, I'm Milt Lopnow, and I live on the corner of Butler, Shepherd, Elmira, probably a somewhere in this neighborhood, maybe, I don't know. And I am 100% for the tax, number one. That windstorm yesterday blew trees down all over and half the night and all day today, they are out there with their graders, getting the things open and cleaning so the emergency vehicles can get through to this lady in case she has a problem. And in the wintertime, when it's icy, they sand the hill, have that little fire station up there, they sand that hill so that, you know, and that all costs money so that they can get the vehicles out to emergencies and things of that nature. And I think they've done a good job, and I do believe that by having more deputy sheriffs out there, that that would cut down on the crime and the thieves and that kind of thing, you know? Even just exposure, if, you know, right where I live on that corner, people come around the corner like that, and they don't even know it's a stop street. Supposed to be 40 miles an hour at that intersection, and they're going 60. And it makes you wonder, you know, is some little kid, you know, on a bicycle going to get it, or somebody walking their dogs and stuff? And so, yes, I'm 100% for it. Costs me $3 a month. $3 is how it's going to cost me a month for a car. And for $3 a month, I think my neighbor over here is worth that in case they needed emergency. And I am for taxing bicycles, adult bicycles only. You know, it costs money to put the strip down through there and that kind of thing, and I am 100% for that. And while I got you on the line here, I'm 100% for having toilets for the homeless... But yes, I am 100% for that, and I do have one thing more. These parks we have, county parks, some of them have RV pads there. Have the people from the jail come out there and build more spaces and have certain amount of those for permanent RV spaces, have income off of it, and then the inmates can get, say, a day off for two days. It'll help our Sheriff's Office have more money in our control, so that's a different subject. But yes, I'm 100% for that, and for $3 a day, $3 a month, rather, and my neighbor can have safety, and I can have safety. So you vote my way. I'll get this snake killer out now, but you know what I'm saying. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during this public hearing? Seeing the hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And I'd like to spend just a real quick moment to respond to some of the testimony we heard. And I really appreciate everyone that came in today, everyone that came in two weeks ago, all the emails we have received, all the telephone calls, even the old-fashioned snail mail letters that we have actually received. All of those have been copied and distributed to the full board and entered into our public records. So any way you contact the board, even voicemail messages have been distributed to the full board and have been entered into our public record on this. Mr. Madison spoke about antique vehicles. One of the things I want to make clear is that this registration fee, because the state does not register antique vehicles annually, will not apply to antique vehicles. There's a one-time registration for an antique vehicle. There was some discussion about the funds not being used in Lane County. The one thing that is probably one of the benefits of this particular fee is it's a local fee that is only available for use in Lane County. There will be a small administrative portion that the state will charge us to actually collect the money, which is far less than 1% of the total tax collected. In fact, it's probably one of the cheapest taxes collected because the state already does this from Altoma County, so they already have experience, and they've estimated the annual cost to be about $80,000. Very small when you compare it to 11.5 million possible revenue. That is money that will be distributed 60% to Lane County after we pay the administration cost, and then 40% to the cities without any of the administration cost tacked on to that. That can only be spent here in Lane County, very specific to Lane County. And one of the things I like to remind people of, because it's a local tax, it won't have some of those things state and federal funding has attached to it, like a minimum 1% being spent on art. So it's local control of that. There was a mention of use of lottery money for roads. That's a misunderstanding. There is, the lottery is not set up to fund roadways. It funds schools and economic development and parks, and that's it. There is no lottery money that has ever gone to roads and ever will go to roads unless they change stuff constitutionally. And, you know, I really do want to appreciate people that come and speak. We do listen. We hear what you have to say. One of the things, you know, I feel for all the folks that are talking about this is gonna be difficult to afford for some folks. We understand anytime we ask for additional revenue, when we asked for the 55-cent levy for the sheriffs and the jail system and youth services, we understood that was gonna be an imposition on people that are being on the edge financially. One of the things about this particular fee for me that I'm willing to ask the voters whether they want to implement it, and one of the things we're not doing is we're not here to implement the fee, we're here about whether we want to ask the voters or not, is I feel that if we don't offer the voters this opportunity to spend a dollar today on maintaining roads, I'll be back, or the board may not be me, in five years asking you for $10 to $12 in four or five years to repair the roads that we haven't maintained up to then. So this is actually asking for a dollar today, you don't have to come back in five years and ask you for 10 or 12, which is gonna add largely to the number of people that won't be able to afford that tax at that time. This is actually hard to conceptualize sometimes, but maintaining our roads now is actually avoiding higher taxes in the future. So I just wanted to answer the few things we heard today. I don't know if any of my fellow board members want to comment on some of today's testimony or not, or if they have any. Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Sorensen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would add a couple more pieces. There are, it's kind of difficult to find, but there are several different classes of items that are exempt. And antique cars is approximately anything that's over 60 years are considered to be an antique. There's, you have to calculate it based on, I think, 1956 to today, and so there's a strange way to do it. But there's also the option of classic cars or special interest vehicles. If those vehicles are over 25 years in age and is part of a club, so hypothetically, if you're a Chevelle or a Ford pickup club or something like that, it's possible that you can register those vehicles through the DMV with just basically one registration fee and purchase a plate, and those would be exempt. There's also trailers, when we talk about trailers. Trailers that have a payload, including their own weight, less than 1,800 pounds, is exempt also. It's recommended that you title those trailers in case they get stolen so that they can be returned potentially if found. But trailers, like hypothetically, small snowmobile trailers that hold a couple, or people make trips to the dump with small trailers, if it's under 1,800 pounds, it's not required to be registered under state registration, and consequently wouldn't have to pay this increase because it's exempt. So there's quite a few things. Hopefully, over time, if this moves forward, we'll be able to explain that in greater detail.
Commissioner Sorensen.
I just wanted to also clarify a few other things. One is on the, and by the way, I may be just sensitive to this, but it's not the driver that's over 60, it's the vehicle, Ryan.
Vehicle.
Okay, very good. So regarding other things that have been brought up, you know, why don't heavy trucks pay the fee? Answer, state law prohibits Lane County from putting a fee on big trucks. Why don't bicycles pay the fee? Answer, because state law prohibits that. Why is the fee for motorcycles lower than cars? Because Lane County has the authority to make that distinction if it wants. That's one of the very few that we do have some latitude on. Why isn't the fee $36, or $33, or $43, or $100? Well, because it has to be set somewhere between 0 and 43. The board is picking 35. So that's a few answers to some of those questions. And I also think that there was the issue of travel trailers, and I actually forgot the answer on that. So what is the scope of the recreational vehicle trailer?
Travel trailers, recreational vehicles are exempt from the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think part, and again, they're exempt because fees paid by RVs or travel trailers actually go into state parks. They do not go into the Department of Transportation. And part of that is the camping issue, and I worked very closely with Mr. Russell this last session on making sure we got a fair formula split. You know, I think, you know, I really appreciate the testimony that was provided by citizens, and it's good to see Mr. Madison is actually from my hometown, so, from Springfield. And I think, it's interesting, because when I hear comments about people aren't listening, I gotta tell you, you know, we try to, we try the best we can. I can tell you, my 10 years when I was mayor, one of the things I was asked is, you need to improve our public safety system. We have more officers in patrol, more firefighters, and we have a jail. And by the way, Springfield now has one of the lowest property crime rates out of any city, or the largest cities in the state today because of that, because we listened. And so I think, you know, or improve the economy. We did add a few thousand jobs, $1.4 billion of private sector investment in the city as well during my time as mayor. So we do listen, and we try to listen. But I think you've heard here pretty loud and clear, you know, what our options are. What we're really presenting is what we would deem possibly as a solution or an option, and you're gonna vote on it. We're not enacting it. Commissioner Bozovic just stated that very well. You're gonna have that opportunity to vote on it. We're not gonna enact it. It's a solution. But here's something I would like for folks to think about. So we're getting close to April 15th, so that's tax filing time. So maybe a question you'd like to ask yourself is, when you file your federal taxes, maybe the question you want to ask yourself is, why aren't these taxes necessarily coming back to the citizens of Lane County like they used to? Think about that. 54% of Lane County is owned by the federal government, and yet, we have watched those dollars that came directly to Lane County because of the US4 service, and it was primarily because of timber harvests or the replacement called secureable schools. At one time, Lane County was receiving close to about $25 million of road funds. If it was based on the harvest today, that number is $600,000. There you go. We have a low property tax rate because of what we call, we thought was a really good partnership with our federal partners. Turns out, I think, most folks back in DC think rural America is the suburbs of Chicago. And, you know, I don't think that. So we're presenting just an option here. Our Road Advisory Committee, as Ms. McKinney mentioned, went through several options, came back, said this is maybe the most feasible. On, I thought it was pretty interesting, the gentleman talking about what it potentially would cost him about 2 cents per mile, is that correct? I think is what you'd mentioned. And, you know, I was just recently appointed the Road User Fee Task Force, so we're looking at, and it's a task force, this has already been presented by the legislature, replacing the gas tax with the road user fee, and you would not believe what they're looking at is a potential replacement, is anywhere from 1 to 2 cents per mile as a replacement to the gas tax. So it was kind of ironic you brought that number up, because that's actually the number that's been thrown out there as potential. Right now, it's in early stages. I don't see this happening for a few more years, but this is kind of where things are going as far as road funds. So this really is a solution, or an option, I should say, an option that's being presented to the voters of Lane County. You get to decide if you think it's viable or not. And if it isn't, then you're telling us we need to go back to the drawing board. You know, I'm okay with that. I've been back to the drawing board many times, believe me. If you've been in business for yourself any time, you learn to adapt and improvise constantly, and as a small business owner, that seemed to be my vocabulary most of the time. So I gotta tell you, the comments, I think, are, we hear these comments. We're within the law, we can only do certain things. I thought I'd let you know real quickly, if you're interested, coming to the legislature, Senate Bill 177, which is being sponsored by Senator DeBoque, requires registration of certain bicycles and poses $10 registration. So if you want to contact Senator DeBoque, there you go, if you want that. There's also one by Representative Greenlick that requires permit for operation of motor vehicles with studded tires. So if you'd like to send a letter to these respective legislators, I advise you to immediately if you support those ideas, because at this point in time, Lane County can't unless the state legislature moves forward. So that's where we are. So here's the options for you. If we decide to move forward on this, you all get to make the decision, and if the decision is no, then we come back to the drawing board. So thank you very much for taking the time to testify. For me personally, I do very much appreciate it, and I'm hopeful that we are hearing you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr, did you want to chime in here?
Sorry, Commissioner Bozovic. There's nothing, Commissioner Bozovic, that I would add that hasn't been stated quite well by my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure you had your opportunity.
Thank you.
So with that, public hearing's been closed, so those folks that are out there raising their hand, I'm sorry, but we're past that point in our agenda. We're on to board deliberations right now. So with that, are there any further comments from staff?
No, Chair.
So we have before us the ordinance 1501. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Bozovic, before you do that, if I get interceded, to the extent that there's a motion to adopt it or approve the ordinance, I would offer an inner lineation, that is, in addition to what's there. This is not, does not go to the substance of the matter, doesn't affect your ability...
This section is not permitted, I'm sorry.
Seth, can you get really close to the mic and speak up for Commissioner Farr?
Yeah, let me know, Commissioner Farr, if you can hear me.
Thank you.
I'm gonna suggest a short additional, some language to be added to the ordinance. It doesn't affect the substance of the ordinance, it doesn't affect the ability of the approval of this today. It really just goes to essentially the legislative history of what's there. And what I mean is, there is the very last whereas paragraph in this ordinance refers to the two prior meetings we've had on this matter, and what, of course, is left off is today's. And so my suggestion is we add that, just so that the legislative history of this ordinance is clear. Does that make sense?
Yes, so you're adding to the final whereas, you know, that today's notation of today's meeting because the last, the whereas stopped at the January 27th.
Right, and that information isn't technically necessary to be there, it's there to be informative, and given that, it makes sense that it is complete to me. So if you want, I can suggest language to pin in there or not, up to the board.
I'll look to my fellow board members if they want to add that to a motion on the ordinance or not. It seems like a reasonable thing to put in there, seeing we make note of the other public meetings we've had on the ordinance to list this meeting as well, the third reading. Do you have your language prepared, or...
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you want me to read that in now?
Yes, please.
All right. This I'm suggesting to be encompassed within the motion for approval of this, if there is such a motion, and the specific language we add to the last whereas paragraph following the date of January 27, comma, 2015, comma, add the following language, "Conducted a third reading and continued public hearing on February 10, 2015." And then the remainder of that paragraph, which is already there, is, "And is now ready to take action."
Do I have a board member that wants to take a stab at this or not? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of ordinance number 15-01 on the matter, amendment Lane County Chapter 15 to adopt the vehicle registration fee, if approved by the Lane County voters in the May 2015 election, with the amendment stated by legal counsel, adding the third reading language.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion...
The second was Commissioner Lichen. It's a move by Commissioner Stewart, seconded by Commissioner Lichen.
Sorry, I forgot I have to announce for you there, Commissioner Farr. Discussion to the motion. Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the citizens that have came and spoke in favor or opposed to this effort. I have been with staff to five different cities, spoke to numerous different groups about this and potential. In East Lane County, it's pretty loud and clear that this is going to be a challenge for the citizens I represent because of the distances that they have to travel, or because of the levels of incomes that they're faced with, whether they're unemployed or disabled. You know, I read an article recently where Cottage Grove is one of the top 10 poorest cities in... an article recently where Cottage Grove is one of the top 10 poorest cities in the state of Oregon. So, I understand that this is going to be a challenge. On the flip side, I'm elected to help manage our resources, manage our infrastructure. And I can remember today, like it was almost yesterday, sitting in my grandfather's office back in the late 1980s. And my grandfather was grousing about the fact that it looked like the national forests was not going to be available to supply timber to Bohemia Lumber Company. And they were challenged with that, with the number of employees that they had, the products. At one time, Bohemia Lumber Company was one of the largest manufacturers of timber products in the Northwest, and employed well over 2,000 employees one time. And he looked at me and he said, "Well, looks like the citizens someday will understand how much timber paid for in Lane County." And at that time, I had no idea that I would be elected to a position to tackle this issue. We, as a board, have worked really, really hard to try to continue our SRS payments with the federal government, knowing that those payments help us provide these services. We've also worked to try to get the federal government to adopt new management plans that would, at some level, increase payments to the counties. But in the end, we are here today without further payments from the federal government. We have not seen any new adopted management plans for the ONC or federal forests. And we're faced with a fact that we have to make do with approximately $47 million a year less than what we had six years ago. And today, well, actually, two years ago, a year and a half ago, we addressed the, some of that shortfall with help from the citizens to fund jail beds. And today, we're possibly moving forward with the passage of this, to ask the citizens if they'd support addressing essentially a quarter of the amount of money that we used to receive to manage our roads. And you've heard from our staff today, the effort that we've made. We've reduced our staffing, not by choice, but because we had to. We've made decisions to cease programs, whether it's dust evatement, whether we mowed the aprons three times, now we're down to two, having to make choices to reduce the costs of that provision. Heard today, the mention of yesterday's windstorm. Those are every-year occurrences. The year before, or last year, we had an incredible ice event. And if we don't find some sort of a stable revenue local to fill that, it's going to be very, very difficult for us to continue to provide that level of service. And I'm supportive of sending us to a vote of the citizens to see if this is a legitimate way to make up and have some steady minimal income to provide maintenance for Lane County.
Commissioner Sorson. Thank you very much. You know, the choice before the Board of Commissioners today is pretty direct. Do we place this measure in front of the voters in the May election or not? And I'm voting for this measure. I think the voters of the county need the choice that's going to be placed in front of them. I want to thank a couple of people in particular that were instrumental in providing me with a lot of information leading up today. And first is Ms. McKinney. I think she's done a great job of providing information to the board on the various limitations that the state legislation has placed on us. She's also given us a lot of data on how the money can be used, how the money can't be used. And we've honed and narrowed this project down to a yes or no vote for the people of Lane County. I also want to thank a couple of other people that don't work for the county, but played a role in this. And one is Jim Wilcox. He is the South Eugene appointee on the Roads Advisory Committee. And he's an avid cyclist, an avid advocate for a completely broad-based transportation system that involves cars, trucks, railroads, airplanes, bikes, people walking, buses, and a comprehensive transportation system. And he is one of the people on the Roads Advisory Committee that voted for forwarding this proposal to us. He doesn't work for Lane County government. He didn't have a dog in this fight. And like many of you in the audience that had different ideas, he had plenty of ideas as this process began. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Claire Sarette. She's our city councilor in Eugene, that was one of the people when Commissioner Farr and I spoke to the Eugene City Council, heard our briefing about the proposal, and sent in her email encouraging the board to approve this. So, I know that voting to put a matter before the voters takes some considerable energy on the part of staff and the board to formulate the proposal, look at all of the pros and cons of the proposal, and decide whether the voters will decide this question or not. And I'm glad they're going to get a choice in May. Finally, I'd like to point out that on many issues, I approach them from a matter of principle. And that is, do I like the principle being advantaged, you know, put forward? And a lot of times, I take the view that, well, this is the kind of issue that, where the principle trumps the practicality of it. You know, a great example of that is our great First Amendment right to speak. You know, I mean, I just have a strong view that no matter what people say, no matter how much I disagree with them, no matter how much I agree with them, I feel like they have a right to speak. And that's, I'm a very, I think that is a very principled approach, that I don't change my view based upon what the message is. But I also have a lot of times when I look at an issue very practically. You have a choice to go one way or the other, and you have real practical implications of the decision. And for me, this is one. I've got a district where people have literally been run over in the streets. And I've got crossings in my district where drivers are either unaware or don't care, and the pedestrian is literally killed. And I'll tell you how personal this is. At first, I've had crossings at places like the YMCA on Hilliard and Patterson, where kids were crossing the street, and there wasn't anybody killed there. But there were a lot of close calls and serious injuries. Then I had an actual, you know, people run over in three different intersections. And, you know, Saturday, I was at my church potluck social. And one of the people I talked to was a woman who has lived in Eugene for 20 years. And on Monday, that's yesterday, she was run over and killed in Eugene. A person I just talked to on Saturday night. So, this is, for me, a very practical thing. Forty percent of this money goes to the 12 cities in Lane County. And that money can be used for all street, road, sidewalk purposes. And I think it's going to save lives. So, I think the voters should have an opportunity to vote on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Sorson, thanks for sharing that. Obviously, very personal to you. You know, it's amazing how we all have personal stories, because I think, I recall one that happened to me. My, I was serving probably no more than a year and a half as mayor, and a little boy who was no more than two months younger than my youngest son was killed by a truck on South 42nd Street on his bicycle. I'll never forget it, because not only was he killed, try being a mayor who's just barely, not even 40 years old yet, and you get a letter from his mother, personally asking, "Please do something." Probably my most proudest moment ever is, in my, I mean, people can talk about economic development. Look at South 42nd Street today. Sidewalks, bike paths, curb cuts, all the way down. And Bobstark Parkway was built, because that is where trucks go today instead of South 42nd. That was the former truck route right through our neighborhood. So, personal stories, I think, are important. So, I really appreciate yours, Commissioner Sorson. It hits hard. You know, if, to be honest with you, I think, and Commissioner Stewart laid it out well. And that is, we used to receive these timber dollars that would provide so much for our communities here in Lane County and in southwestern Oregon. I wish we weren't here today even talking about this. I wish we were still lobbying our, you know, talking to our members of Congress, saying, "Well, you know, how much is it this year? What kind of cut is it this year? What kind of replacement? What can I have in lieu of what we're receiving this year?" We're not, unfortunately. We're trying. We're working with them. But unfortunately, we're just trying to get a retroactive, small, tiny payment to come back to Lane County instead of what occurred in the past. I wish we weren't here. But I think what has been brought forth is, this is just an option. And I think it's a viable one. I don't believe the gas tax is sustainable whatsoever in effect. As I mentioned before, the state's looking at trying to, coming up with an option to replace the gas tax, because it's not funding roads anymore the way it used to. Now, let's face it, the CAFE standards of cars keep going up. They want cars to get 55 miles a gallon, or something like that, or 45 or something, where somewhere in those lines, in the next 10 years. And the days of, you know, the Cadillac with the 500, you know, cubic inch engine, those are gone. And so, we're dealing with vehicles today that are efficient and can go a long way on a tank of gas. So, it's not going to happen. So, this is an option. And the citizens of Lane County will get this option to vote on it. And I will plan on supporting this. I know on Friday, I was actually wondering if I planned on it, because I just wanted to look at the numbers. And I think Commissioner Stewart mentioned the same thing I'm running into in the city of Springfield. And that is, it's an uphill battle. I know the Springfield City Council gave their full blessing and are fully behind this. But as I talk to citizens, they come back with a different story. And I try to break it down exactly why we're here, what we're trying to put forth, and what this means for not just Lane County, but for the city of Springfield. And this is just maintaining our roads. It's just like a business. You want your equipment to keep going, you have to maintain it. You don't want to buy it every three years. Instead, you want to go through and maintain it as long as you can keep that life. So, that, this is really what it is. And so, I really, again, to the citizens of Lane County that took the time to come and testify, not only this time, but the time before, I really appreciate that. The emails, the phone calls, the engage Lane County, we've heard it. And I really appreciate it. But citizens of Lane County, you'll get the opportunity to vote on this in May. And this is, this will be presented to you. And so, if, like I said before, you choose to go a different route, we've got a lot of smart people in this organization. We'll try to come up with something new or something different. But I believe this is a good opportunity for citizens. If you want to continue to maintain your livelihood and your roads throughout Lane County, which, by the way, you link that to economic development, this is the lifeblood that gets you to your employment as well. So, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair Bozovic.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Chair Bozovic. Just a thing to say. You know, I'm in Washington, DC right now. And one of my main tasks back here is to speak to our congressional delegates and explain to them how important it is that we receive the federal funding to replace the timber dollars that's been mentioned over the last couple of decades. It's an uphill battle, generally speaking, because while our congressional delegation supports it, it's not universally supported by their colleagues in the Senate and the House representative. At home, we have issues with what we're talking about today in the fall, and the issues that are going to be long-lasting and far more expensive to replace. Should we address, should we not move with the maintenance fee? You know, to help in this tough decision, I've independently brought in person a wide range of people. In my hand, I have the letters that I've received from seven mayors from throughout Lane County supporting placing this question on the ballot in May. Not necessarily in support of the question itself, but in support of placing the ballot, placing it on the ballot in May. And that is what we're proposing to do at this point in time. Should, when this comes to the vote, I am in support of it. And I want to offer my thanks to Ms. McKinney and her colleagues for making certain that I was able to go out and provide accurate information to the many people who had many conditions and questions surrounding. And as well, I will continue to seek and listen to questions and answer the questions clear up until Election Day, clear up until 5:00 on Election Day, and until the last people are turning in their ballots, answering questions to help people make their decision whether to vote yes or no on the May ballot. So, at this point in time, I'm in favor of asking the people of Lane County, "Are you willing to support the maintenance fee? Do you make certain that we don't have to pay far more to repair our roads down the road?" Thank you, Chair Bozovic.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. So, I'll take my opportunity to weigh in on the, Commissioner Farr, if you could mute your phone for a minute. Thank you. Take my opportunity to weigh in on the motion that's before us right now, which is to place what our Citizens Committee recommended to the board as the best option available for funding roads at this time, under the current legal structure we have to operate under. And, you know, one of the things I want to mention that hasn't really come up, but it, there was a question in some of the public testimony, is how are we guaranteeing that this is going to be spent the way we said it's going to be spent? And one of the things that is part of this measure is a requirement that this fund be kept separately and audited every year to show that it is, at least the county portion is being spent exactly the way we said, similar to the audit function we put on the jail levy. And we just, you know, last month, got a report on the jail levies audit, and it showed that we did exactly what we said we were going to do with those funds. We also, in addition to having an annual audit, are going to place our Roads Advisory Committee, or some other citizen committee, as an oversight committee of the spending of this money. So, there will be accountability and transparency to the public if this measure is passed by the voters exactly how this new resource will be spent. So, you know, for me, there's, you know, that's a really strong portion of placing this measure on the ballot, in that it does have a built-in transparency and accountability function into the actual measure. Folks will know exactly how their money is spent. But, you know, I have an interesting look at this. I'm the only board member that has a degree in engineering and practices as a professional engineer for most of my career. It gives me a unique insight, having designed and constructed, reconstructed, cut open, repaired roads and bridges through most of my career. One of the things about roads that people may not get, but it's very similar to any other large asset you own, whether it's your house or your car, if you don't take care of them with regular maintenance, they will break down and cost you a lot of money in the future. The fortunate thing for Lane County is we have had a resource from federal timber funds. And we have kept our road system at a condition level that is far above a lot of other road systems. And it's a fortunate thing, because what it allows us to do is spend money on preventive maintenance at about a dollar a square foot today, versus some cities that haven't had that timber funding have allowed some of their roads to get into such disrepair, they take full-depth reconstruction. And they're having to pass bond measures worth tens of millions of dollars with a specific list of roads they're going to repair. They're fixing those roads. In the meantime, there are other roads around the city that are getting in that same condition, and they may never catch up. You know, it's paying to change your oil every 5,000 miles, or it's paying to replace your engine in 30,000 miles. Which makes more sense? You know, everybody that owns a vehicle understands it's far cheaper to change your oil. And what we're offering the voters, if we approve this ordinance today, is an opportunity to say, "We're willing to change our oil." Or, "We're not willing to change our oil. We'll just wait five or 10 years, and we'll see what happens, and we'll pay the price at that time." But it'll be the voters' decision. I'm hoping that they'll support this as the best option of how to keep changing the oil on that $6 billion asset that is our transportation system in Lane County. 1,440 miles of roads, 417 bridges, 22,000 signs, and who knows how many other culverts there are that we maintain. It's a big asset. And it would be irresponsible of me, as a professional engineer and as an elected official, to say, "I'm going to ignore..." an elected official, to say, "I'm going to ignore that for a few years." It'd be easy for me to do. I mean, that's really what's happened in most cities and with a lot of infrastructure across America. It's a lot easier to kick the can down the road as an elected official and ignore that because I might not be in office when it actually does break, and somebody else will have to increase the taxes 10 times more to fix it. But I think this board has been very forward-thinking and listening to our staff and the professionals that maintain our road system and understanding that we're better off doing a very small increase now for folks than having to make a huge increase later that's going to compete with all of our other critical services for resources five or 10 years down the road. You know, if we do not take care of our roads, five years from now, those potholes and major repairs are going to be competing with our Sheriff's Department for Jail Beds and with, you know, our assessment and taxation for folks to keep those rules and for elections folks and all of our other services. We're better off spending that dollar today than $10 to $12 five years from now. So, I plan on supporting asking the voters whether they want to change their oil or replace an engine. So with that, is there any further discussion to the motion? This is an ordinance, so roll call vote. Mr. Mochaiewski, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Sorenson?
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Liken?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Commissioner Farr, it's...
Commissioner Farr, aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. I remain on the line.
Thank you. We have one other item I want to get to that relates to this now that we have actually voted to move this forward to the ballot. Order 1502-1007, in the matter of referring a vehicle registration fee to the voters of Lane County for maintenance and preservation of safe roads and bridges, directing the publication of a voter's pamphlet and approving ballot language for the May 19, 2015 election. And we have Ms. McKenney presenting on this also.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. So as I mentioned in the previous item, this is a board order that was dependent on your previous motion to approve the ordinance. And what this board order does is it authorizes staff to move forward with creation of the voter's pamphlet, as you all have directed. It also names five people to the committee. The code requires that if we do a voter's pamphlet, we have to use an impartial committee, a diverse group, to create a simple impartial explanatory statement. And so, we did solicit people on both for and against. We asked some of the folks who had either submitted written or oral testimony in opposition, people who had submitted testimony in favor, and then we also tried to find people who were neutral or still asking questions about this measure. And we also looked for diversity in terms of gender diversity, political diversity, et cetera. So those people represent that diversity to the best of ability. We were able to gather them. And then the third piece that the order does is it implements the ballot language that we would place on the ballot. It's consistent with all of the Secretary of State and County Clerk's office with regards to the word limits, et cetera. So those are the three pieces, the three things that this order would do. I would note also with regards to that explanatory statement, the committee, we have a February 27 deadline, and after having spoken with the county clerk a few times, it's not just the ballot title that we want to be complete by the 27th, but it's also having all of those pieces, including the explanatory statement. So our intent is if you move this forward, we will create that committee within the next few weeks, so we will be able to meet those deadlines. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
I have none.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Farr, I should have asked. Is there a motion? Commissioner Liken?
I'll take it off Commissioner Stewart this time. Move approval of order 15-02-10-07, in the matter of referring a vehicle registration fee to the voters of Lane County for maintenance and preservation of safe roads and bridges, directing the publication of a voter's pamphlet and approving ballot language for the May 19, 2015 election.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Liken and seconded by Commissioner Stewart. Is there any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Farr, any discussion?
None.
Seen and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, 5-0.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Yes, Commissioner Farr.
At this point, may I be excused and intercepting the Senator Mochinov's office to talk about the pure rule of law?
You will definitely be excused, Commissioner Farr. Thank you very much for making the time to attend from Washington, DC.
And thank you for making the link.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
And I am going, if, I'll give Lydia Cook a quick warning. I thought she was available. Is she still available? Is she outside? I mean, not Lydia, I mean Linda Cook, sorry.
They may have put 3:00 PM essentially on their schedule.
Okay.
That is to come after the last item.
All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is the order 1502-10-08, in the matter of adopting the recommended five-year parks and open space system development charge capital improvement plan for FY 1516 through FY 1920. And we have Mike Russell, Parks Division Manager.
Hello, Commissioners. Mike Russell, Lane County Parks Manager. Item before you is to adopt the five-year parks and open space system development charge capital improvement plan for fiscal years 1516 through 1920. This is an annual affair for you. We come to you every year to have the CIP parks, CIP adopted. It is part of Lane Code 4670 that provides for this process every year. Have your memo. I just wanted to highlight for projects identified where funding has been identified. At this time, there are only two projects, and I'll talk about a third in a minute. Hendricks Bridge Park Boat Ramp and Parking Lot Improvements is hoped to be funded by a grant from the Oregon State Marine Board, which we're applying for at this time. They have partnered with us in the first phase of that with a new restroom at the Hendricks Bridge Park, but this would be a second phase that would expand the parking lot and bring improvements to the boat ramp facility there. And then Schindler Landing over on the coast is a grant that we received from Western Federal Land's Highway Division to pave that parking lot and add a restroom there for Wayside. And that's moving forward as well, but will go into the next fiscal year. Parks Advisory Committee had a public hearing on January 15, 2015 to hear public comment on the draft CIP. They did not receive any public comment at that time, chose to support the document as presented, and forwarded to you with their recommendation for support. I need to point out that under the category, if you look at the attachment, Exhibit A, which is the CIP on page, second to last page, under the category of long-range planning, we need to amend this document to include $10,000 for the Parks Master Plan in fiscal year 1516. That's being paid for out of SDC, so it definitely needs to be in the document. Initially, our plan was to have the master plan adopted before the end of this fiscal year. It's going to go into next fiscal year a little bit, so we wanted to add that item into here as an amendment. If you could make that amendment in your adoption of the board order, if you so choose. And that's my report. I'm available for questions.
Questions for Mr. Russell?
Commissioner Stewart? Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mike, for that. I think you personally answered my question. I wanted to ask how we are doing with our Parks Master Plan.
Yeah.
And we've got a lot of different things, I think, moving behind the scenes with the committee on the events and different things. So, and I noticed long-range planning. So is $10,000 all that's needed for the master plan, or is some of this 50 and 20 and years out? More towards the Parks Master Plan?
Yeah, it's just $10,000 into 1516 that we need to complete the master plan.
Okay. And just a final question. So, I think it was last year, maybe it was a year and a half ago when we had the discussion about Blue Mountain Park?
Yes.
And it was brought to the attention that the plan was, that park plan was multi-years. It's really old. The park master plan, if we adopt it, will not replace that plan, will it?
No.
Individual park plans?
No, that wouldn't. So our hope is to get the overall master plan, the Parks Master Plan, adopted, and then amendment to the Rural Comprehensive Plan, get that all in line. And then we will start working on updates to other master plans, including Blue River and Howard Beaufort Recreation, for example.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
So, I have a couple of quick ones. First is, I know partly because the grant that was applied for, we didn't get, but can you describe, you know, where Archie Knoll's campground isn't actually in here for any capital worth? But I guess that's dependent on our negotiations with the Forest Service and would be added back in or amended at that time?
Could be. Right. So, at this point, we don't have any legal interest in Archie Knoll's. We're working towards that. We will be applying for a state park and local government grant. As you've stated, we did apply for a county opportunity grant, and were not successful in that. So now we're going through state parks through their local government grant program, submitting, and we will be submitting the special use permit to the Forest Service prior to April 1st. So, it's kind of moving on a parallel track with the Forest Service and then grant money, grant request as well. So, yeah, all that's moving forward, and we're hoping to get the grant to help fund those. And at that point, I believe Ms. Berry is working on the grant proposal. When she comes to you for approval of that, wrapped into that would be approval to amend the CIP to reflect that.
Right. There are also some Army Corps campsites at some of the reservoirs that we were looking at taking over management of. Those would be in the same sort of category as we get agreements and get funding to do any capital improvements. We'll be amending the capital plan in the future.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of order 15-02-10-08, in the matter of adopting the recommended five-year parks and open space system development charge capital improvement plan for fiscal year 1516 through fiscal year 1920.
Second.
Does that include the amendment to that one table?
Yes, I'd like to include the amendment to add the $10,000 for the Parks Master Plan in 1516 mode.
And does the second agree to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we had that on record.
Thank you.
Any discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, 4-0, with Commissioner Farr excused. So we will jump back now to Consent Agenda Item 5D1, and this is a grant application from the Sheriff's Department and other agencies to the Homeland Security Division. And I want to initially take a moment to apologize to the Sheriff's Department staff and everyone for pulling this last minute. Normally, I like to ask Commissioners, and including myself, to give you guys at least 24 hours' notice if we're going to pull something from the consent agenda, and really, it was one of the last-minute decisions to pull it based on a constituent approaching the board prior to us convening the board meeting this morning. And I felt it was important enough to pull this off because there is a lot of concern about the use of military equipment in civilian police forces, particularly after some of the news this past fall from Ferguson and other places. And I felt it was an opportunity for the Sheriff's Department to address how some of that equipment might be used, give an opportunity for the board to ask questions if they have any, and also to understand the timing of this grant and maybe some of the other things that are in the grant that are critically important to Lane County. I saw some very, you know, good things in this grant. It seems like it's going to do a lot of good things if we can get it applied, if we're successful in it, or even successful in any piece of it. New radios and all sorts of other good things are included here. So, with that, I will welcome Ms. Linda Cook, and it looks like we got Lieutenant Cliff...
Harold.
Yeah. So, if you guys want to maybe address the particular item that was of concern, were some of the items in Part II of the grant application?
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to review this item and for considering approving the grant moving forward. My understanding is that the concern is about Project Number Two, where we list an LRAD, a request for an LRAD, a long-range acoustic device, and night vision goggles. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. First of all, just for a little bit of context on the grant itself, this is a Homeland Security Grant, and the intent of the grant is to bring funding to local first responder jurisdictions specifically for enhancing their capability to respond to either acts of terrorism or any type of natural disaster. Is there a weird sound on this? Okay, okay, I'm going to back up just a little bit there. So, the grant is intended to provide local funding for both acts of terrorism and catastrophic response. Consequently, the two items that are listed in Project Number Two are a nice, they have an application to both issues, acts of terrorism and catastrophic response. The other thing to note also is that neither of these items are new to the Sheriff's Office. The long-range acoustic device is very similar to the police-mounted loudspeakers that they use, but they're hardwired to their vehicle. And the difference with the long-range acoustic device, we call it an LRAD, so if I default to that acronym, you'll understand what I'm getting at. So the LRAD is a modular device where it can be taken to wherever it's needed. So, when you think of a catastrophic incident such as, well, for example, the Springfield Mill Fire, our sheriff's deputies were brought out to help evacuate that area. The LRAD would have been very helpful and instrumental in that evacuation. If you think about the potential for tsunami on the coast, it's a great device to help us clear the beaches. If there is some type of catastrophic earthquake, it would help us be able to search areas and find out if there's anybody in there, or, there's just a number of different applications for the LRAD device, including police operations where they can use it to hail for a subject. And I'll let Lieutenant Harold discuss this further if you'd like, if I don't do a good enough justice to the police application. But my understanding is that when police arrive on scene, it's very beneficial to the surrounding public as well as to the subjects that they're pursuing to be aware that police is on scene and that they not be mistaken for perpetrating themselves. So the LRAD device is basically an enhancement over something we are currently using, and we've already had internal discussions that the LRAD is much more powerful than the police-mounted loudspeakers, and therefore they'll need to use very safely. So we'll make sure that the SOP makes sure that only the special response team members are able to operate the device, and that they do so in a way that follows the safety parameters outlined by the manufacturer. Any questions on the LRAD device before I move on to the night vision goggles?
I'd just add that, I would imagine it might have been possible to, it might have needed to be used in that forest fire up in the Oak Ridge area. It seemed to me like after everybody was on that La Duke Road area that those folks were on, essentially, warning and alert, it would probably be a lot easier to go up the road with a loudspeaker.
road with a loudspeaker and say, we need to evacuate, than, than, you know, I think that device, seems like it would work well in that situation, too.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think it actually creates a much safer operation for all concerned, both the subjects we're trying to evacuate. For example, if we had like a hazardous material spill, we could broadcast to tell people to shelter in place. But also, it keeps the law enforcement officers, the deputies, off of the streets, so that they're not subject to the, whatever the environmental conditions are as well. They could drive through the area in a protected vehicle and then alert the, the public. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner.
Any other questions on that device? Thank you.
Okay. Now to the night vision goggles. The night vision goggles are also something that the Sheriff's Office has been using for a number of years. The reason we're requesting for some additional night vision goggles is because the ones we have are growing obsolete, and we don't have enough for all of the special response team members, the operators. So the night vision goggles are very useful when they're trying to apprehend a subject, such as out in the woods. And I know Lieutenant Harold has a, a story to tell of where it actually was instrumental in protecting the lives of three of our deputies. But it's also, imagine, again, if we had some type of catastrophic earthquake, and in my experience as an emergency manager, it seems like the calls always come in the middle of the night. It doesn't seem to happen in the middle of business day, when I have all your resources handy. In that situation, if we had some type of structure collapse in the middle of the night, we would be able to go on scene and be able to search for any, any victims. So again, this particular project is really kind of near and dear to my heart as an emergency manager, because it's a nice blend between equipping law enforcement, not only to respond to acts of terrorism or violent subjects, but also to help with catastrophic response.
And I would just add in, there's a couple of specific stories, but the night vision devices are used on a regular basis by our nighttime patrol guys. You know, we're sending a couple deputies a long ways out, and it's dark, and they're responding to whatever sort of acts of aggression have summoned the police. One story in particular, where our deputies ended up being shot at and returning fire, was a domestic situation where the woman is called 911, and she's very fearful of her husband, and he's armed with a gun. As our deputies met just outside of this rural property and developed a plan, one of them had night vision. And as they approached the residence, he was able to see that this individual had now exited his house and was waiting out in front of the house for the responding deputies. He was able to see that because he had this piece of equipment, whereas otherwise, they may have been basically ambushed as they approached the house. And then from my own personal experience, in 2000, we had a young man that lured us out to the Walton area with a false 911 call, and he had set up three different stations around the house. He'd gotten into his, his father's firearms and had duffel bags of ammunition and rifles at these three different locations where he could fall back. They really planned this out. And I was the only member, there were three deputies that responded that call. I was the only one with night vision. And it's a rural Walton, it's night, it was a dark and stormy night. And just one light on, on the trailer, and this individual kept running out into the woods, away from the, the light, porch light. But we were able to keep track of him. And, and that situation, again, was able to be resolved without injury to the deputies, or in this case, to him. So just a couple of quick ways where we use these on, on a real regular basis.
Any questions on that subject? Commissioner Stewart?
On the, on the LRAD, did you call it? R-RAD?
Yeah, Long Range Audio Device.
LRAD, yeah.
Is that a, basically, is that a microphone? Is that a noise-making machine?
It's a little bit of both.
Okay.
You can use some loud beeps, if you will, to alert, to get the attention of the surrounding area, and then you can deliver your message, you can broadcast your message.
Okay.
So yes, and it'll broadcast in English or Spanish.
Okay. So it's both?
Right.
It can make a noise, like an alert sound, like a, like a fire alarm sound, or some other kind of alarm sound, but it can also be used to convey specific information?
That's right.
Okay. And is that separate from a vehicle-mounted? Is it, is it portable but not vehicle-mounted?
Yeah, it can be both. It can be set up on a tripod, it can also be mounted to a patrol pickup or-
Okay. If we get this grant, how many will we have?
One.
One. Okay. Are they expensive?
They are. They're about $18,000, I want to say, $18.22.
Okay. How many will we have total if we get the grant? One?
One.
We have none now?
Right.
Okay.
I should say that Lane County Sheriff's Office, this, this would be the first for the Lane County Sheriff's Office. There are others in our community.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you for coming and explaining that, that, you know, I hadn't even thought of some of the applications you described for some of this equipment. You know, I was, I kind of thought of the whole evacuation situation with the, the loudspeaker, and also, you know, potentially contacting somebody that barricaded themselves in a barricade situation. But some of the other stuff you described with the, basically, the high-tech bullhorn, you know, were interesting and also just some of the situations you described with the night vision goggles. I was thinking more of, you get the, the Alzheimer patient that disappears in the middle of the night, you know, in a rural wooded area. You know, finding that person is going to be critical in a hurry, and night vision definitely is helpful in that situation also. With that, if there's no further questions of staff, oh, Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, not necessarily a question. I, I just remember back, you know, when the Department of Homeland Security was created, and when the dollars started coming back to states and local government, actually had the honor of serving on that Domestic Preparedness Work Group. And so we, we worked through, as the League of Oregon Cities member, and we would pass, go through the application process. And I remember they had almost too much money actually coming back, because most governments couldn't even use it. And of course, it was, it was pretty much fixed, and so you had to use it for this type of purpose, and you couldn't use it for other things. And what happened is that literally, there were some local governments began to turn the money back, because they couldn't use it. But one thing I will say is that Linda, of course, has been involved in this for a long time. Linda's applications were, were some of the best. And I, I'm not saying this just because you're here, I would tell this to anybody, and I have. Your, your applications were always so succinct and so good, they were easy to handle. Because, believe me, some of the smaller communities would want to, get the application in, went, oh, boy, you know, what are they really looking for? I tell you, we're real fortunate to have Linda, who, who's involved in this application process, because going through, going through this, she does an excellent job, has for many, many years here at Lane County. So Linda, thank you for that. And so I, I really appreciate the work that's going on, because Lane County, of course, applies for, for all the jurisdictions here. And, and so, but the, so the, when I, when we saw these applications and realized where it was coming from, who was handling it all, it was easy to do, because at the very beginning, there were a lot of applications we were sorting through with, you know, in a sense, limited dollars. Turns out, we almost had too much money. But, but anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done over the years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart? So with that, I'd like to move Approval of Order 15-02-10-16, in the matter of applying for and approving any resulting award of a state homeland security grant in the amount of $1,233,049 for the period of October 1, 2015 through September 30, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. Movement seconded. Any discussion to the motion? I'm going to pause here to, to get a little bit off the, the subject of the actual grant, and just kind of the whole process of we're funding our emergency management and public safety systems through grants right now. And how dependent county and municipal governments have gotten on grant funding versus what we used to be able to fund out of general funds and forest funds in, in Lane County and around Lane County municipalities. It's a sad statement that this is how, the, the current model of how we're funding public safety and emergency management in Lane County is through grants. And I, I appreciate the work staff's doing, and, and, you know, you guys are doing, you're turning over every stone to try and, you know, help get our share of federal money. It would sure be nice if we didn't have to apply for it all the time and be at the whim of somebody giving us a grant, and not being able to foresee how much money we're going to have from year to year. It's all dependent on how many grants we actually win an award of. That's no way to be funding something that is an everyday expense. And we, we see it, whether it's in our public safety system with you guys, or it's the DAs applying for grants for, you know, for drug court, or it's our nonprofits that are part of our public safety system applying for grants for, you know, for treatment of addiction and, and domestic violence counseling, you know, all throughout our system. And this goes even, you know, to the new CCOs. Everything seems to be moving to, you got to apply for a grant for that. It's not the right way to be funding government. And, and I really wish we didn't have to make this application. So that being said, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously with Commissioner Farr excused, and thank you very much for coming back.
Thank you.
And I wish we could have worked it out this morning to get you in here. Again, my apologies. I will try my best to give you guys at least 24 hours' notice before I pull something again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So with that, we are down to review of assignments. I don't have any new assignments. Unless you want to give some. There was one relative to referring the support at the state level of the Panda Initiative to legislative committees. Okay. If, if, that's the only one I'm remembering. Is that, any others?
ENDAA-
Yeah.
-organs discussion to the legislative agenda.
Yeah, and we were holding that future Agenda Item for first meeting in March. First meeting in March, we're all here. Any other business for the board? Seen and hearing none, we are going to adjourn until 9:00 AM, March 6. Unless there's an emergency.